...as well as chocolate bars and candy corn.
Today, we're celebrating Halloween here at Copan Peace Park in Westlake. We are giving out candy, food, and also like some other resources to the community, especially to the kids. The families are gonna come in, they're gonna get the food, they're gonna get the kids are gonna get the candy, and then they're gonna exit. So it's basically a walk-through. This year, because of the pandemic, we're trying to accommodate, you know, the families. It's still bringing some joy and still bringing something that is festive to the community. Even though like we're not gonna be able to do it as a festival like we usually do with games and entertainment, we still wanted to give something to the kids today. And so that's what we thought about this walk-through, grab and go for the kids, so they can still have some sort of experience this Halloween.
It's about 350 boxes of food. Each box comes with eggs, milks, and other groceries. And we're hoping to help 350 families.
Yo pienso que es una bendición de parte de Dios y de parte de las personas también de buen corazón que pues está tratando de ayudar, de colaborar con las demás personas. Y pues sí, están haciendo una buena labor ayudando a las demás personas.
You don't have to look far to see fellow Angelinos enduring trying times. And enough can be said about the people, companies, and organizations that have come to the rescue these days. That's why folks from the helpful Honda team join forces with Tina's Pumpkin Patch in hopes of delivering a fun time for families in Sherman Oaks.
Today, we will be giving out free pumpkins to SoCal Honda dealers. We're very excited to be here at Tina's Pumpkin Patch here in Sherman Oaks. And we're just gonna help everybody celebrate Halloween. Because it's just a lot of people been stuck inside, they haven't had a chance to go out. And you know, Halloween is still happening, we're still out here helping, because it's our job to be helpful.
People are coming, obviously, to pick out pumpkins, but they're also bringing their children for some of our activities. We have a train, we have a petting zoo, and we have pony rides.
What was your favorite part?
I think the petting zoo was fun, right?
Yeah, the petting zoo.
They like meeting the llama.
Oh, and the little pigs?
Yeah, the little pigs.
And they got to ride on ponies. What else did you guys do? Oh, and the choo-choo train? You rode on the train? Yeah.
The SoCal Honda dealers, they just wanna show that they're helpful with the community and everybody. So that's why we go out and do our Random Acts of Healthiness. And people are still surprised, like you said, people are still surprised that we are very real, they think we're fake, that we're just marketing, but we are actually out there helping people. And we're continuing to help people during this pandemic.
Everybody has their own comfort level with regards to the pandemic. People wanna have activities for their kids. And a lot of people are happy to see that we're here, we have some things for the children to do, and get out and experience Halloween in a safe way.
Well, it's kind of kept us from doing things and experiencing with my daughter. You know, kept special moments, but now, little by little, we're doing things.
We're trying to make the best of it, you know, covering ourselves, being safe, using our face masks, hand sanitizer, trying to stay, you know, six feet apart from people. So we're making the best of it.
Yeah, and it's nice to have fun things like this to do.
Well, we really appreciate people supporting us, and so we are always out in the community supporting them and being helpful. And no matter what, we are always going to continue to do our Random Acts of Healthiness throughout SoCal California.
Visiting the zoo has always been a great means of getting the family out of the house for semi-educational entertainment. And while we have seen the L.A. Zoo reopen to limited capacity, movie theaters are still shuttered until further notice. But fear not, movie buffs, because the folks over at the L.A. Zoo have found a way to bring back movie night, albeit under the stars.
I'm really excited to watch a movie at the L.A. Zoo and to support L.A. Zoo, and I'm so excited to watch Betty White in The Proposal.
It's a great new event that we're doing here to help continue to raise money for the zoo and provide a really fun experience for families.
As soon as I heard about it, I wanted to do it, and then I had an email, so I was like, okay, we're going.
This is really fun. We were dying to get out of the house and do something fun, and it reminds us of our childhood.
The zoo was closed for historic 166 days, and we have reopened, but obviously during that time, we weren't raising the kind of money that we normally do when people come and visit the zoo. So this is just one of the ways that we're trying to supplement our gate attendance. And we're selling out, we're sold out tonight, we're sold out tomorrow night, so buy tickets early if you wanna come.
I think this is a great way to get out. You can go with the family and hang out, bring some food and snacks, and see one of your favorite movies on a big screen.
It's nice to get out and to see a movie, a fun movie, you know, and I used to go to the drive-in when I was a kid, so you know, brings back that whole nostalgia, so...
So we have implemented remote digital ordering, so you can place your order for your food on your phone through a text message or the website. And then, when it's ready, you go, pick it up, and then take it back to your car and enjoy it in your car. And we have all of the county guidelines in place to ensure that people can have a safe experience.
We're having a great time, we can't wait to start the show. Stay safe, everyone.
The city of Los Angeles is posed to recognize Women's Entrepreneurship Day in November. Scheduled events and seminars have been moved online, but the event's primary themes of connection, strength, and collective power remain as its foundation.
We are an incredible economic engine, but making sure that we create that access and opportunity for more women businesses is part of our mandate. Los Angeles has one of the most dynamic economies in the United States, and it's fitting that we declare November 19th Women's Entrepreneurship Day in the city of Los Angeles.
In growing up myself and in rising in my professional journey, I rarely see examples or I rarely saw examples of Filipino women in roles that I aspired to have or to be. Because our culture is very much rooted in the export of labor from the Philippines. What that results in is a culture of labor and working for others instead of controlling our own destiny, and I think it's a missed opportunity.
I think every personality is different. And for me, in terms of like really just knowing my own strengths and knowing the way that I tick, because the way that other people get things done and the way they balance it could be totally different than the way it works for me. For so long, I was looking at myself through other lenses, and I was comparing myself like apples to oranges, and I felt inadequate, and I didn't feel like I was, you know, good because I was using a certain set of metrics. It's different for everyone.
Never let your dream die, no matter what the circumstances is in your life, going through divorce, going through trauma, going through molestation, whatever the problem, whatever the circumstances may be, even in the midst of a pandemic, no matter what it is, don't second-guess yourself, just do it, and it'll all pan out.
Entrepreneurship is bigger than starting a business. It's about self-sovereignty, self-determination, and the liberation of even our community across the world.
Councilmember Gil Sadio takes his annual jazz festival online. Take a virtual tour of L.A. murals, or check out the latest craze, laughter yoga. It's all up next on Virtual Things to Do.
Councilmember Gil Sadio's Latin Music and Jazz Festival is going virtual this year. Watch Sadio's Seventh Annual Latin Music and Jazz Festival for free on their custom broadcast page and social media platforms. Featured artists are Gilbert Castellanos, Latin Jazz Ensemble, and Mungorrama by Jose Corizo. Festivities will include special promotions, photos, and other exclusive peeks into this amazing Latin jazz music program and a live chat room. Join in on the fun with Sadio's Seventh Annual Latin Music and Jazz Festival, streaming from Facebook, Instagram, and Twitch simultaneously with gilssadio.com/live. Saturday, November 7th, beginning at 5:00 p.m. It's a virtual tour of some of the coolest walls in L.A. Join four prominent local Chicano artists, Judith Hernandez, Jose Lozano, Miguel Angel Reyes, and Barbara Carrasco, as they discuss the new murals adorning the new La Plaza Village mixed-use complex in downtown Los Angeles near the El Pueblo Historic District. The new murals adorn four structures in La Plaza Village. They are all located on Broadway between the Hollywood Freeway and Cesar Chavez Avenue. Jump online and take a tour of Los Angeles like you've never seen. La Plaza Village mural tours are available on the YouTube page for La Plaza de Cultura y Artes beginning November 7th. The L.A. Public Library wants to introduce you to laughter yoga. Laughter yoga is a practice involving prolonged voluntary laughter. Laughter yoga teaches practical ways to cope with everyday stresses and problems, all while having fun and burning some calories. And now is a great time to try it out for free. Join a class via Zoom for virtual laughter yoga with certified laughter yoga instructor Barbara Molina. Enjoy the health benefits of laughter with this fun and relaxed weekly 30-minute class for all ages. Laughter yoga is happening Mondays beginning at 4:00 p.m. To join in on the laughs, email emily@eerronson@lapl.org. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bilbao. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Okay, good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, November 4th. I'm Nury Martinez, the president of the city council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, the president.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Here.
Sidio.
Sidio, here.
De Leon.
Here.
Harris Dawson, absent. Corretts.
Here.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
Wesson, absent. Thirteen members in a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of October 28, 2020.
Okay, Mr. Price moves and Mr. Lee seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. O'Farrell moves and Mr. Blumenfield seconds, next.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order. Next.
Items one through eight are items noticed for public hearing. Items nine through forty-two are items to which public hearings have been held. Items forty-three through fifty-six are items to which public hearings have not been held. Items fifty-seven through sixty are closed session items considered by the Budget and Finance Committee. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us, members. Any of you wish to call any of these items specials? Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning to you and our colleagues. I want to collect the call item thirty-nine for an amendment. Would you like me to read that into the record?
Yes, please. Item thirty-nine, sir?
Thank you so much. I'd like to direct the CLA. We've been very successful, by the way, with our dining platform program in downtown San Pedro. Should be a model citywide. Just talked to our businesses and restaurants, talked to our San Pedro Chamber of Commerce, as well as our P-Bid in San Pedro. So I'd like to direct the CLA on this item. LADOT and the Bureau of Engineering, with the assistance of the Bureau of Street Services, the Department of Building and Safety and City Planning, the LA Fire Department, and other, or any other departments as needed, to closely examine and consider the San Pedro outdoor dining pilot program as a potential option when developing recommendations relative to the feasibility of creating a citywide permanent alfresco program.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin.
You're welcome.
Okay, second by Mr. Bonin. Any others? Mr. Buscaino?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bonin?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Good morning, colleagues. I'd like to call item fifteen special for comments. And that'll be all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, fifteen for Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Madam President, there is also a request to hold item fourteen for an amendment.
Yes, and I'll be, um, introducing that momentarily. Let me just finish going through the queue. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to ask that we receive and file item fifty-one and fifty-two because they are no longer necessary.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Corretts. And it's been seconded both items. Mr. Buscaino, fifty-one and fifty-two?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian?
Uh, thank you very much, Madam President. I would like to call, um, one second, please. I'd like to call item thirty-four special for purposes of amendment.
Okay, go ahead, and you want to read the moving clause?
And if you need to make that motion now, I would move that we delete recommendation number two from this item and proceed as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell. Any others, Mr. Krikorian?
Uh, no. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. There is a new restaurant in Atwater Village that has broad, widespread support from the community, the neighborhood council, no opposition. Uh, and so therefore regarding item eight, I'd like to move to approve the application for determination of public convenience and necessity for this establishment.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Buscaino. Any others, Mr. O'Farrell?
Uh, that should do it, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead, Madam Clerk, and if I can please, um, make an amendment on item number four, which, I'm sorry, item number fourteen on today's agenda. Council File twenty-dash thirteen-eighteen, uh, be amended to delete recommendation one and replace it with the following. Instruct the city administrative officer and the chief legislative analyst to jointly report on strategy to extend Project Room Key locations while ensuring that the extension counts towards the sixty-seven-hundred-bed city-county-wide agreement and include recommendations and eligible funding resources to serve all the local match to FEMA resources. Two, add a new recommendation as follows. Instruct the CAO and the CLA to coordinate with the, um, with council offices regarding, regarding Project Room Key to address any operational or security concerns that may arise. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. O'Farrell. Thank you. Members, are there any other specials? Okay, Madam Clerk, what items are available to vote on this morning?
Madam President, nine through thirteen, sixteen through thirty-three, thirty-five through thirty-eight, forty through forty-two, and fifty-seven through sixty are closed session items. However, a public hearing has been held in Budget and Finance.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian, did you want to speak to items fifty-seven through sixty?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, all of these items include recommendations of the city attorney regarding, uh, our routine settlements. Um, Budget and Finance has considered all of them and recommends approval of the recommendations unless members have questions or concerns. That can be done in open session.
All right, thank you, Mr. Krikorian. So, Madam Clerk, those items are available to vote, is that correct?
Uh, yes, Madam President, if I may read the settlement amounts for the closed session. Item fifty-seven, in the case entitled Stewart-Gidry versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expand up to four-hundred-ninety-five-thousand in settlement. Item number fifty-eight, in the case entitled Gennaro Vazquez versus Los Angeles Metropolitan Transportation Authority et al., there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement. Item fifty-nine, in the case entitled Suzanne Olson versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expand up to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand in settlement. And finally, item sixty, in the case entitled Sylvia Mendez versus City of Los Angeles, there is the recommendation to expand up to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand in settlement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There's been a request to continue item sixteen for a week till November tenth, so without objection, that will be the order. So why don't you run through the eligible items to vote this morning?
Yes. That would be items nine through thirteen, seventeen through thirty-three, thirty-five through thirty-eight, forty through forty-two, fifty-seven through sixty.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Go ahead and prepare to vote. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson, absent. Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson, absent.
Thirteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we're gonna move on to public comment. So if you can please read the calling information for our callers. And Mr. City Attorney, if you can please explain our speaking rules. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam President. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call six-six-nine-two-five-four-five-two-five-two and use meeting ID number one-six-zero-five-three-five-eight-four-six-six and then press the pound key. Then press pound again when prompted for a participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number being called out, press star six. Let me repeat. Call six-six-nine-two-five-four-five-two-five-two and use meeting ID number one-six-zero-five-three-five-eight-four-six-six and then press the pound key. Press pound again when prompted for a participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. And finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number being called out, press star six.
To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and one minute from general public comment if you wish. Please start with the comment on the items before providing general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or again stray off-topic, the president will cut you off and you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We're going to take forty minutes total of public comment. The items that are open for public comment are items one through eight, fourteen, thirty-four, thirty-nine, and forty-three through fifty-six. That is to repeat, one through eight, fourteen, thirty-four, thirty-nine, and forty-three through fifty-six. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, you're live in the council meeting, when you hear the last digits of your phone number or other identifying information, if you're on a blocked number, please call stars, press star six immediately to unmute yourself. And if you're listening on another device, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately so we don't get feedback. And because there's a slight delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, it'll cause a lot of confusion if you continue to listen on your devices. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bonin?
Uh, yeah, Madam President, um, I had called fifteen special. I noticed that Mr. Stubble didn't, uh, mention fifteen. I just wanted to know if that was...
Yeah, a public comment has been satisfied for fifteen.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and take the first caller.
Call in user one, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, um, my name is Camille. I'd like to speak on all available items in general public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Thank you. I definitely would support item eleven on, uh, mass in businesses because those are very necessary. It's, uh, notices, and there's very little protection for workers when it comes to regulating these things, so I need a little bit of help. On item twelve, um, I don't understand...
Speaker, I'm really sorry to interrupt you, Speaker, but we've already voted on items eleven, twelve. You're perfectly free to talk about them in general public comment if you want, but you can't use up your three minutes on that. Would you like to take us, take you to general public comment, or do you want to move on to items that are open for a public comment?
Which ones are open?
Again, they are items one through seven, fourteen, thirty-four, thirty-nine, and forty-three to fifty-six.
Okay, uh, yeah, I was completely muted before I got into this comment, so, um, okay, so, I, I, I'll move into, uh, general public comment, but, uh, so...
Okay, thank you, Speaker.
I think that, uh, motions like number twelve, uh, are illustrative how the city focuses on sidewalks as a comprehensive eighty, like, 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 when you talk about ADA, you guys don't have a comprehensive strategy, you just use that selectively, uh, to criminalize homelessness. And so just things like that show that, I mean, alfresco, there's no long-term plan for people outside, living outside, or alfresco for the winter. You guys just don't know what you're doing and hate homeless people. Um, there, um, there's items that reflect how Nissia Raman, who's one, is going to win, is right when she says you guys need to examine the budget fully to see how the work of LAPD affects, um, like, like, how effective they are in relation to crime rates and clearing rates and crimes getting solved and, uh, also just generally, um, Nury Martinez, working-class people want you to, want, uh, you to stop using this as a prop to promote your shitty values, because we actually care about other people and don't want to perpetuate suffering on the streets by demonizing our neighborhoods because we have a home. Stop governing like ten thousand people. Our needs win because those days are over.
Thank you, Speaker.
They're to express the will of the people, not our, not be our bosses. It's not your fault, you're too power-hungry to realize the difference.
Caller with the phone number ending in eight-one-seven-eight, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Sophie Strauss, and I'd like to speak on all available items in general public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items open for public comment and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Right. Hi, so first of all, item number fourteen regarding Project Room Key. I think we all know this initiative was a tremendous failure due to our cities refusal to commandier hotel rooms when it mattered. Now we're out of money because it's sitting in the pockets of law enforcement, and a program that could have been life-saving is wasting away. You guys have to do absolutely everything in your power to extend the disappointing remnants of this program as long as possible. It's literally the least you could do. Now moving on, special item fifteen, all full-distance general public comment. It's embarrassing how long this motion for something as basic as a report back on social housing has been floating around your desk. We saw how fast you guys can move when it comes to criminalizing porn on house people with forty-one eighteen, so why don't you bring that same enthusiasm to something that could actually address the housing crisis with, you know, actual housing instead of just trying to push through legislation that would make the housing crisis work? This doesn't even have a report back date, so you guys need to put a real timeline on this of sixty days so it can be heard when the council returns from holiday recess. And here's your first bit of information on this to report back on. The people supported vacancy tax and a flipping tax to fund social housing. And lastly, I hope you all paid very close attention to what happened in our city last night. Regardless of national politics, we are seeing resounding victories for our progressive people-powered movement here in LA. The city rejected our cop-loving DA and voted overwhelmingly to fund services instead of prisons. Herb Wesson, who hasn't even here, your record spoke for itself last night and so did the seven-hundred-and-fifty-k you accepted from police packs over the years. Los Angeles is rejecting cops and bootlickers alike, and it's looking highly likely that Nissia Raman will be joining your ranks shortly. Let David Reeves' lies and hypocrisy be a warning to all of you that Angelinos are sick of bullshit and we don't stand for it anymore. We want real change in this council, and we want you to stop violating the Brown Act and voting unanimously all the time like cowards. We want you to see that the fight for the good of the masses instead of fighting to line the pockets of your wealthy donors is what we want. You may find this annoying, but if it lasts, if last night taught us anything...
Thank you, Speaker.
...is that we are not dismissible. We are nearly, we got...
Caller with the phone number ending in one-one-zero-eight, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, hi, Daniel Gus, all items and general public comment.
Sure, you have three minutes.
Three minutes and one...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gus. Go ahead.
Yeah, three minutes and one for general. Council members, um, so Herb Wesson lost his race, and he is essentially a lame duck. Mr. Rue lost his job, and he is as well. Because and regarding all of the agenda items today, I am imploring the current thirteen council members, not including Mr. Weston and not including Mr. Rue, pay very, very close attention to what Mr. Weston promote in this and in the upcoming agendas, because they are tied specifically, Mr. Weston, to people who are either going to federal prison or who are under federal charges. And we know that that is not the end of the controversy involving some of these matters. So with today's agenda, and everyone that's coming up while they're still in office, pay close attention. Protect the rest of Los Angeles from anything that Herb Weston in particular and David Rue also is going to promote or vote on.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Gus. I think you're in general public comment, or you want to go onto the items?
Let, let me, let me try to be more precise so you understand where I'm going on that.
Please.
So we have various, and if it's still off, then I'll go on to general after that. But we have items from the committees that Mr. Weston was on and Mr. Rue is on. And I am concerned that with them now having no job to lose, that they are free agents in a building that is saturated in corruption, controversy, and federal prosecutions. Prosecution, that's essentially what I'm doing here. Pay very close attention, because these items that you have today, budget and finance, public safety, where Mr. Rue and Mr. Weston participated, uh, were saturated in, in, in this type of corruption, so pay close attention. I'll, I'll go, I'll give back the, the one remaining minute of, um, of items, and I'll go to my general if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, yeah, thank you. Uh, council members, at least kudos to Mr. Rue for showing up to work today. And Mr. Weston, who's been in politics for more than two decades, didn't show up today. I hope that you folks learn a lesson that you can only lie to the public so much. Mr. Weston's career is over, he'll have a nice pension, but he has left in disgrace running for county supervisor, the same way his pal felon Mitch Englander came in this place out of six when running for county supervisor. If you lie on the job, you're going to get booted from the job. And David Rue losing the job as an incumbent to upstart Nithya Ramon is extraordinary. He's only the third incumbent in the past several decades to lose his job as an incumbent, let alone to a newcomer. Congratulations to Ms. Ramon, um, and congratulations to, to, to Holly Mitchell for defeating two people that have harmed and abused the city of Los Angeles for far too long. Do a good job, you'll move up to the next level, council members, and if you don't, you'll see the same fate as Mr. Weston and Mr. Rue. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in five-one-three-seven, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Jamie Penn. I'm the resident representative for Wilshire Center Creative Town Neighborhood Council, Sub District Three. Uh, I'd like to speak on, I'd like to speak on item fifteen, but I will speak on item fourteen in general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for each. Please go ahead.
All right, I'd just like to echo a previous caller on item fourteen. I believe her name is Sophie. Um, this project was just terribly executed. It was largely a performative project. It was not deployed nearly at all. Um, people deserve this project to be done right. Um, that's my entire comment on fourteen. I'd like to move on to my general public comment.
Okay, please begin.
So, um, just to echo the previous callers, um, I do hope the members of this council were watching last night. Uh, it is a shame everyone isn't present today, though I really hope they were paying attention, because last night it was proven that local politics willing to work with the people and not talk at them can succeed in a big way. It was proven you don't have to take corporate money to win, and you don't have to declare yourself beholden to the Democratic Party. No matter who they think should win, we, the people, ultimately decide. And there are many new collaborations between organizations now, between tenant organizing, mutual aid outreach. We have new official connections with labor unions, and believe me when I tell you those channels remain open. And in my opinion, we're fully capable of supporting a general strike here locally. And only time will tell what's to come, but it is abundantly clear that neoliberal politics, which blindly yield to the whims of corporate interests and ones that ignore the will of the people and refuse to champion our demands, are not succeeding. We demand a local government...
Thank you, Speaker.
...that works for all of us, not just the wealthy few. Thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Caller with the phone number ending in one-seven-two-one, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, hi, uh, my name is Sutchen, and I'll just do a general public comment. Um, so I just want to say that I support item fifteen, it's a good start, and I hope it passes, but more importantly, that the action is taken afterwards so we can create this desperately needed, desperately needed housing. Um, and then very quickly, I want to say this. CM Corretts, last week, uh, at the last week's meeting, you suggested that you would be open to having advocates come to the table to help develop homelessness policy, and I really hope that you'll follow through on something like that. Um, there are a lot of incredible orgs and advocates that do so much important work across the city, and I think that we would all benefit from coming to the table and talking about solutions together. Um, so please follow through on that. Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in seven-seven-one-nine, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn, and I'd like to speak on the agenda items as well as general public comment.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, Mr. Fabel. Um, first of all, I, I'd like to speak about the public hearing item for the wine and eggs program that O'Farrell is trying to get going with a lot of support. This is because people have started to enjoy a cocktail with their breakfast in Los Angeles, given the stress of COVID and other things. So here, the public interest and necessity is being served. Uh, I agree with O'Farrell in a rare twist by providing, as I say, wine and eggs together. And Buscaino quickly appreciated that himself. I'm not sure I agree with, uh, the one-hundred-percent, twenty-four-seven alfresco dining program without some accommodation so that people could get by. I do like the idea, frankly, and I don't like the idea of over-regulating and frustrating businesses who are trying to climb back after this, uh, this tough time. Now, uh, meanwhile, you have Martinez, the great leader, uh, having a look at the Project Room Key extension program. Well, certainly it was a good idea to put people up and off the street and into local hotels, but the idea of continuing to pay local hotels huge sums, uh, for this kind of thing does not feel like a long-term solution. And whereas it is a great way to reconnect the TOT love that has been, uh, you know, underlying the graft corruption and greed at City Hall for many, many years by waiving the transit occupancy taxes, the mayor can affect the kind of bastard contributions that make him feel so good. I, I don't know. I don't know. I think Project Room Key, uh, needs to be replaced with a really good plan to help people. Someone talked, I think Planning has an item about, you know, what can we do? What are the ways that we can provide social housing, meaning housing that is not impossibly unaffordable? The answer is, uh, in that item, number twenty, whatever it was, or thirty. But, uh, De Leon has item fifty-four today. Here's a new guy, uh, certainly burst in the back room, but nonetheless, here's a guy who wants the Broadway money to finally be released. Seven million will come out the door to, to, you know, spruce around his neighborhood. So let's watch closely, as they've all been waiting for this money, uh, as it was tied up because of the FBI indictment of Weezer and Englander. And, you know, I think people are wondering, what was the four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-dollar settlement to the whistleblower at item fifty-seven all about? And, you know, why does the city not disclose that? And the other item for the legal settlement, there's one...
So Mr. Previn, fifty-seven was already voted on. You're ha, you're free to talk about it in general public comment, though. Would you like to go to general public comment?
Oh, that's funny. So you're suggesting as the lawyer, no talking about the legal items because you already voted on them?
Y, y, yes, you are talking about the item we already voted on.
I just wanted to get that on the record. Thanks. Yeah, no, how much time is left?
Uh, three seconds before you go to general?
All right, well then, let's just go right to general on point. At item number fifty-eight, which was a legal settlement, that you rejected the settlement. I think the public, when we reject a settlement, would like to know what's being rejected. I don't think that they submitted it to the city attorney and Krikorian in secrecy. I think they want to know that you owe us a lot of money because our guy fell on your street or whatever the reason. So, again, it gets to the simple, um, space of open government. Why in the world you go into the back room, which you don't even do because Krikorian is so deft at moving the claims board meeting around? I want you to know that it's tomorrow at three p, or something strange where it never is. He's, he put it on with thirty items and then immediately, uh, canceled it and then confused everybody. I don't know. I think we need to be more transparent and then we can clean up some of the mess. So, Fabel, uh, my God, uh, it must be very difficult presiding over such a cesspool, but good luck, and we did get Rue out, so that's something. MRT will follow shortly thereafter. This will be short. He'll go to work for Newsom as one of the top jefes, once he realizes that he'll never become mayor. So, thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in zero-eight-nine-nine, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
This is Stacy Dawson Sterns, and I don't want to waste time today, so I'm just going to use my one minute of public comment.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to call out last week's shit show on forty-one eighteen. Thanks for making everybody wait for hours and hours so that you could put us off, not let us in, and then all of a sudden miraculously, all of Buscano and Price's babies show up for the comment period. That was the most rigged thing I have ever seen in my life, not to mention that Buscano is also rigging the, the, um, police commission meetings. We know, we know it so well, and what I'm really looking forward to now that we've got some new movement here, is this council stopping being such fucking cowards in the face of the police department. Buscano, your days are numbered. You can't be advocating for your bros anymore. We're coming for all of you, we're coming for you now, and I want to see some council members, before you lose your jobs, show some fun. We're talking to you, Harris Dawson, we know you're not there, but we know you're going to hear us anyway. You are, you are, you are totally complicit in all the bullshit that LAPD is doing until you stand up and talk out loud. Rodriguez, I'm talking to you as well. I yield my time and fuck you, but welcome, Nithya, can't wait to see you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Caller with the phone number ending in five-four-three-six, please press star six.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Which items would you like to speak on?
Uh, item fifteen and general public comment.
Um, so fifteen's not actually open for general, or open for public comment, but you can talk about in general, so should we just give you a minute?
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to reiterate what Sophie Strauss said earlier. Uh, item fifteen is really, really important. Um, obviously, your housing policies have been a complete disaster and failure, and this is a good idea, but you need a report pack date so this doesn't get stuck in limbo like all the other performative motions you guys put forward. Moving on, uh, I'd just like to say how awesomely exciting it was that Nithya is booting Ryu, um, and I hope it is a huge wake-up call to the rest of you, especially sociopaths like Joe Buscano, Joey Buckets, who likes to slobber and, and froth at the mouth at the very idea of getting to punish homeless people. And, uh, to Stafford B., of course, I mean, you're on Borrowed Time, you're, you're a complete and utter clown. And MHD, um, we all saw those screenshots this week of you just getting completely owned by Chief, Chief Moore, uh, so you're on the list, too.
Thank you.
And, um, yeah.
Caller with the phone number ending in four-two-zero-eight, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hey, yeah, uh, that was funny. Um, this is Rob Quan, I'd like to speak on items forty-eight and general public comment.
Sure, you have a minute for each. Please go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, and I, I just want to quickly note that, um, for those calling in, uh, we couldn't hear any of the discussion prior to public comment or any of the public comment instructions on what items you can speak on, et cetera. Uh, so I just wanted to flag that. Uh, I'm sure that's in response to Mr. Spindler, but, um, let's get it right. Uh, prior to forty-eight, NASA and, uh, you know, predicting what we breathe project, I think that's, you know, common sense considering a recent gas leak in the valley and the fact that NASA was more straightforward and, and, uh, upfront with us than the DWP. Uh, our council president likes to talk about frontline communities and CD six, um, but, you know, what kind of oversight do we have here? The petroleum administrator position's been vacant for a freaking year. Uh, that's led to a halt in hiring for other positions in that office. Garcetti wasted about nine months looking internally, when everybody knows we need to look for expertise outside of the city of L.A. He got three fucking applications. Uh, the best-case scenario now that they've actually opened things up is that they'll maybe hire somebody in January. Um, slow-walking this position only exacerbates that oil setback, but maybe that's what our council president wants, who knows? Um, for my general public comment, you know, I, I want to thank Councilmember Bonham for item fifteen, uh, realizing that social housing is the only way we can get out of this thing, and it's kind of sad that it's, you know, taken this long. But, um, moving on, I, I want to talk about last week's vote, uh, the most fascinating one I've seen in a few years. Um, Council President Martinez was pretty livid, but you have no one to blame but yourself. You had nine votes the week before, uh, and then you ended up with like six. Uh, you tried to hurt Weston in the thing, but it's pretty clear you're not hurt Weston. Whatever I might think of him, uh, he knows how to count his votes, he knows how to keep his votes while also reading a room and feeling out what he has to do to get things done. He's infinitely more skilled. How is it that an ordinance came back beyond Bob Bloomingfield's recognition? The city attorney either went rogue or the council president was the one guiding and drafting the ordinance while the mover was kept in the dark. That resulted in even greater backlash. We, we had this dramatic draconian ordinance, even worse than the one before, and it led to backlash against everybody in the horseshoe. There was no commu, uh, committee hearing, we had two days' notice on the ordinance. For those around the horseshoe, she didn't just keep us in the dark, she kept you in the dark.
Thank you, Mr. Quan.
Herb would have never forced his colleagues to vote a week before an election. This broken process pretty...
Caller with the phone number ending in six-nine-nine-nine, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Nancy Hannah, and I would like to speak on, uh, item sixteen, although I believe that's general comment.
Yes, correct. So you have a minute, please go ahead.
Good morning, council members. My name is Nancy Hannah, I'm calling on behalf of the Better Neighbors L.A. Coalition, and we support this per-night fee as necessary for sustainable home sharing ordinance. However, the staff report indicates there will be a remaining shortfall because the host registration fees are set too low. We don't think Angelenos should be subsidizing this industry by half a million dollars a year, and we encourage you to update the registration fees to eliminate this taxpayer subsidy. More concerning than the ongoing financial costs is ongoing illegal commercial activity. City planning staff have reported thousands of violations but have only issued a few hundred citations and have conducted zero investigations. Today's staff memo suggests the number of illegal listings may exceed the number of legal listings. Tents, trailers, and other categorically ineligible units have got, somehow gotten registered under the HSO. We still have a lot of work to achieve the promise of the HSO. And then recent New York Times coverage shows even Airbnb is having a hard time bringing the industry's party houses under control. Land use problems are becoming hu, uh, public health problems.
Thank you, Speaker.
And the passage of the HSO was a great first step, um, but we need to do more to encourage enforcement.
Thanks, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in one-one-four-three, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Faith Myra, and I'd like to speak on general comment.
Please go ahead, you have a minute.
Thank you, President, um, Council, President Martinez, for her motion calling for a sunset date to the gas operations at the Valley Generating Station. No community in Los Angeles deserves to have a gas facility in their backyard. I live in Maravista near Playa del Rey Gas Storage Facility. The California Council on Science and Technology has singled the Playa facility out as having relatively higher risk to health and safety than the other facilities in California. This dangerous facility threatens the health, my health, and the safety of me and the people that I love, and I urge the council to agendize the resolution put forward by council members Bonin, Anthony Lee, calling on the state to create real plans for closing gas storage facilities in L.A. And I'd like to point out that, um, thank you, Holly Mitchell and Nithya Ramon, for supporting our communities in this fight and let them be an example. Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0914, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 0914, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yeah, my name is Caleb Crowder. I'm gonna speak on items fourteen, forty, and general public comment.
So, you have, um, you have one minute for the item. The second item, actually, we've already voted on, so it's general. So, you have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Okay. Great. Item fourteen, um, yes, of course, we need to be expanding Project Home Key sites. There are a wholly inadequate amount of them. We know that. That's why we were so upset in the previous weeks when we've seen further pushes to criminalize folks and we have not nearly enough beds to be actually housing people. Yes, you need to expand it. You need to be commandeering each and every vacant room that you have possible. We have an unbelievable crisis on our hands, so I would recommend that you please approach this with expediency. That's all I'm really gonna say about that. I think I'm gonna move on to general public comment. Item number fifteen, this is amazing. I would like to highlight the fact that this motion is arriving in front of this council because of the decades of work of black and brown and queer and immigrant and disabled folks all across this country who have had enough with housing injustice. With housing being commodified, ends up having the exact type of homelessness and housing crisis that we see in cities like ours all across the country. This is an unbelievable moment. You need to bring impacted folks to the table to tell you how to implement this. Thank you, Mike Bonin, for championing this. Homes guarantee, people's action, this is the work that we have been working on. I'm glad to see it here. Let's make this come to fruition. Thank you. That is it.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7006, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
All items, general public comment.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Thank you. Number one, to the defeated Herb Weston, vote no on number one. That little greasy, oily-haired, little spook, he doesn't deserve our consideration. He's a loser, and he did it without an attorney. That's right. No attorney would ever put together something this illegal. Fuck you. Now we get to item fifteen. Mike Bonin, you're crazy. You're doing a good job.
So, Mr. Spindler, item fifteen is not open for, for public comment on the item? You can go to your general public comment.
Oh, okay. Because you, you let the other fellow speak up. Yeah, you were letting the other guy speak up. Okay. It's, 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 it's hard to know what, what you voted on. Continuing with the rampage through the rampages agenda, no on item ninety-seven, no on item eighty-one.
So, Mr. Spindler, there are no such items. Please speak to the agenda items now, or we're gonna cut you off.
Oh, I don't want to be cut off. No, how about general public comment?
Okay. You have one minute. Please begin.
I fucked you, Herb. I know you're out there, you greasy little fuck, trying to blackmail me for a hundred and eighteen thousand with that detective Eric Reed. We're coming for you, man. FBI's coming for you. They're coming for you too, Eric. You, you and that little March thirtieth, twenty-seventeen attempted assassination, they're investigating it. Yeah, Holly Mitchell, he fucked you. I told you we'd fuck you. I kept my word. I kept my word. Congratulations to George Gascón, kicking Jackie Lacy's sorry black ass out of that chair. She's as white as paste. All she had to do was drop my charge back in June twenty-sixteen, but she hung me out of the rail, so I brought George Gascón down here to kick her ass. But let's talk about David Roe. I will not concede that race.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Your time's up.
Yep.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5113, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, Heather Carson, general public comment.
Yes, you have a minute. Please begin.
Thank you. I'm speaking as a co-founder of Home Share Alliance Los Angeles. The two ninety-three per night fee doesn't sound like a lot, but if booked year-round, that's an additional ten sixty-five on top of the eight fifty. Someone charging thirty a night would pay a seventeen-point-five percent tax, whereas someone charging three hundred a night would pay one-point-seven-five percent. That's not equitable. In any case, this is not a time to be raising fees. Paula asks that you delay this decision until the emergency order lifts and actual data can be analyzed instead of projected. Instead, please focus on enacting the RSO Owner Occupied Amendment, which you voted on exactly one year ago today and has been stuck with planning ever since. Yet, planning has made the time to ask for three-point-nine million, including one-point-six-five million, towards only fourteen planning salaries, whereas this amendment would help over five-thousand Angelenos and bring in fourteen percent income to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1148, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I would like to speak on all available items. And general public comment, please.
Yes, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please start with the items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, uh, you owe Ms. Autry an apology, Ms. Martinez. Do it. Apologize. Krikorian, we're not saying you do nothing. We're saying you do next to nothing, and what you do is wrong. Another day of vote trading, one-hundred percent yes votes on all items, as usual, just like the previous caller said. This is a criminal kindergarten way to run a city, and that's why we're a big homeless encampment. Item number eight, Farrell, you anorexic little weasel, you disgust me. This is not a vote on this restaurant for public convenience. You left out for the sale of alcoholic beverages. Just more criminality, you're career criminals. Why don't you just tell the truth for a change? King of homelessness, criminally insane, corrupt Herb Weston is gone. You can take this council to another degree, Ms. Martinez, or you can wallow in the same gutter trash.
So, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you get onto the agenda items, please?
I'm just talking about number eight, sir, but I'll get on with another item, if you like. Number fourteen, pre-yes project, like the other callers have said, Project Room Key is a disaster. Mike Bonin's motion to tax the vacant units was watered down by Weston and the rest of you criminals in bed with all the big developers, so he had to drop the motion altogether. Item number forty-four, Dawson, criminal, is apparently consoling Weston. They're both out today. Item number forty-four, twenty-two million dollars in bonds for sixty-five oh one Crenshaw Boulevard. They don't even have the decency to say how many units there are to this thing. Lowering the nine million dollars in interest from three percent to one percent, more bootlicking to, to developers, criminal activity. Vote trading. Look up vote trading, comma, Los Angeles City Council public. Google it. This is kindergarten, kindergarten way to run a city. Number nineteen, LAPD contract for security. What is number twenty, DNA enhancement grant? What are we doing? This is criminality beyond belief. Good riddance to Rue, good riddance to Weston. The rest of you people need to look at these, look at these items, look at the way you do business, and stop it.
You're on your general public comment now, Speaker.
Okay, thank you. Why do I always demand that Martinez apologize to Ms. Autry? The very last official act of Herb Weston, criminal, criminally corrupt, insane Herb Weston, was to throw Ms. Autry, a ninety-nine-pound little black woman, out into the street. Why? So he could stand there for the next hour and a half praising himself. And Martinez, you turned around, stuck your neck out, waved to her with your fingers. Disrespect to my community, to her, yourself. You need to apologize to her, set the universe straight, or you can wallow in Herb Weston's gutter and keep the city in a homeless state of, of homelessness. We want our city back, and we're going to recall Marquise Dawson.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1047, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning. It's, uh, Sylvester Annie with the Love We Don't See. I'd like to speak on item fourteen, fifteen, and general public comment.
So, fifteen's not open for item comment, but you could have a minute on item fourteen and then a minute in general public comment, Speaker. Please begin.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Uh, well, with, with fourteen, obviously, as, as the callers have previously stated before, it has been largely performative. We still have too many of our houseless, uh, brothers, sisters, and non-binary folk in the streets right now, and it's completely unacceptable, under any condition, and especially during a pandemic. The thing is, when it comes to housing, our family members, and that's how we have to look at them, is as our family members, I want you all to look at them as your family members, because we're all part of one city. We all should be part of one people. This is the bare minimum that we can do for these people. And the lack of compassion and the fact that we've waited all this time to just do what's right is gonna reflect poorly when we look back on how things were run during this time. I'm gonna shift over to my general public comment, and with my general public comment, I want everybody, I hope everybody took a look at what happened last night. We want you all to struggle with us, and that struggle with us in the sense of struggling just to struggle, but struggle with us in the sense of working together and building coalitions with people in hopes of a better future than, that we've known before. That's all we want. Last week, I saw a video, or, or earlier this week, I saw a video of, of David, and, and he was just being asked a simple question, you know, by constituents. Couldn't even answer the question. You know, that's a politician. We don't want politicians. We want people, and the thing is, if you don't support people-led movement, you don't struggle with us, then what's gonna end up happening is the people, or the people are gonna rise up, and you're gonna be out of a job. That's it. Shout out to Nithia. I'm, I'm happy, and I hope you guys welcome her with welcome arms, but we need to protect our houseless brothers, sisters, and non-binary folk. That's a must. That's necessary. That's our families, and that's all I have-
Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good gentlemen, I want to speak on general public comment.
You, you have a minute, Speaker. It's difficult to hear you.
I want to add my voice as the voice of the organizations that I belong to and here to the recall of Marquise Harris Dawson. He finally got rid of the guy that one caller always refers to as the team of homeless folk, Herb Weston. And it appears Jackie Lacy is gone also. Now we're going to cleanse the black community of Marquise Harris Dawson, the gentrifier in chief. Dawson is trying to evict the poor residents of a rent-controlled unit, Sunset Village, with two-hundred-and-six apartment buildings at Crossman and Crenshaw, so that his billionaire buddy, Jeff Green, can build a luxury apartment. We will not tolerate this barbaric act. We, the people, are sick and tired of black people that are elected like Marquise Harris Dawson, putting and telling out our black community for his own personal gain. We must recall Marquise Harris Dawson.
That concludes public comments. Members, we're gonna vote on the following items. Um, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on item one through eight, forty-three through fifty, and fifty-three through fifty-six. Madam Clerk, please prepare. Please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Sidio.
Uh, Sidio, aye, thank you.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson absent, correct? Councilmember Krikorian. Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Going back to Councilmember Buscano.
Mr. Buscano, can you hear us?
Yes.
Is that an aye?
Aye, sorry.
Thirteen ayes. These items are adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on the following items as amended. Item fourteen, thirty-four, thirty-nine, fifty-one, and fifty-two. Please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscano.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson absent, correct?
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Thirteen ayes. These items are adopted as amended.
Okay, let's move on to item fifteen. This was called special by Mr. Bonin.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, colleagues. Uh, today, what we have before us is, is a motion asking the city, uh, to begin to look into and explore, uh, whether or not it would be appropriate, uh, which I think it would be, to do social housing here in Los Angeles to accommodate the incredible need for affordable housing. Uh, what is social housing? It's a term a, a lot of folks are not, uh, familiar with, uh, yet. Um, it is a, a forum, frankly, of, of public housing, uh, done much better than the United States has traditionally done it. Um, we have a here in Los Angeles County, by, by most estimates, a shortage of at least half a million units of affordable housing to meet the existing demand from low-income renters. That's probably a low-ball estimate, and the demand certainly, as we are seeing, uh, is increasing. And we, we're never going to meet that demand if we rely solely on trying to coax the, the, the private sector into building affordable housing through, you know, tax credits or subsidies or zoning incentives. tax credits, or subsidies, or zoning incentives, or relying on giving a small percentage of extremely low-income renters a housing voucher. Social housing is typically rental housing provided at below-market rents, usually based on income-based formulas, permanently off the private market. Sometimes it's owned and operated by a municipal government, or by a nonprofit housing provider, or by land trusts. Sometimes residents own a stake in their own homes at subsidized rates, but they cannot sell them for exorbitant profit. Think about this as a public option for housing, just like we have a healthcare system that is really an expensive Band-Aid over a gaping hole, and we need a public-sector alternative. The same is true of housing. Around the world, more and more parts of the world are starting to use public housing, it is, or social housing. It has been done for a very long time in Vienna, where three in five residents live in social housing. And the threshold for eligibility of it is about twice the average of annual income. This is just not low-income housing, this is mixed-income housing. It's also workforce housing. And one of the reasons this differs so much from the U.S. relatively failed experiment in public housing is that it's done right. It is a different mix of incomes, so that the public has more buy-in in its success. There is real sense of ownership among people who live there. It is done generally with public amenities in mind, close to shopping, and to parks, and to public transit. And it's been very well done in other places, like Finland and Sweden, Hong Kong, and Singapore. Scotland is now moving towards it, New Zealand is moving towards it. And it's something that I think is worth us exploring here in Los Angeles. So what this motion seeks to do is a couple different things. It asks the CLA and H-SID to actually talk to people who are familiar with social housing, researchers, experts, affordable housing activists, and prepare a report for us on the types of social housing, and the different models of social housing used in other places, and make recommendations for applicability here in Los Angeles. The other thing it does is it asks the city departments to report back on how many additional units of public housing are right now allowed per council district under the voter-approved limits of 3,500 units per council district from several years ago, and to tell us what the steps are necessary to allow for additional construction above that, what legislative or statutory changes would be needed to be made. And then it also asks the CLA and CAO to let us know what some potential funding sources could be. There's a variety of different funding sources used in different areas. And the things I ask them to look at specifically are state and federal funds, whether or not there are any new revenue sources, such as a flipping tax, or an out-of-state transaction tax that could perhaps help fund it, the potential use of a newly-created public bank, now that those are on the horizon here in Los Angeles, thanks to our state legislature, and whether or not there's a potential for the city to recoup some costs on the back end by renting or leasing units established by the city. And the last thing it does is it asks CLA, CAO, and Asset Management to let us know if there are any city properties in Los Angeles that would be ripe for at least a demonstration project of social housing. So it's a big thing to do, it's a different way of looking at the need for providing for affordable housing in Los Angeles. And the crisis is so big and so bad that we really do need to begin to be thinking outside the box and the usual way of doing things, because it's a system that is not providing the inventory we need in the housing that Angelinos need. So I ask for an aye vote, thank you.
Mr. Sidio?
Madam Chair, I want to speak in favor of the motion. We've had this discussion in committee. And, you know, my understanding at this point is that there's no prohibition for us to do all the things that have been articulated. In fact, in our office, we are taking initiatives to do the various things that are noted. I don't think I need a report from the CAO or the CLA to tell me what I can do or not do with these various elements, but there is a, to the extent that we can build a consensus around these approaches, and take these kind of, on an international level, kind of these boutique samples, and then turn them into real pilots within our district, I think. All of us should open ourselves up to that. You know, today's a new day, we're going to win an election, and be able to turn the direction of our country back on the right track. And we should think about this in terms of the planning. I think one of the biggest challenges for us, of course, is going to be the question of funding. And then, of course, the question of, you know, public-private partnerships, and to the extent we take advantage of that. We don't have an experience of building much, but we can figure out what is the appropriate balance in terms of public-private partnerships for us to do that. You know, in thinking about this, there were, Madam Chair, remember when I first came to the council, the various things that we had talked about, the things that we can do, we need to rethink all these things. We had a "How's LA?" initiative, and I want, as this goes forward, for us to think about these other things. I want, in the CLA and the CAOs, to report back to give us some thoughts on questions like site plan review modifications. So, for example, this social housing, we should expedite it as much as we can. And yet, we have, we're encumbered by the number of 50, 50 units in terms of residential units, in terms of site plan review modifications. We should look to make that bigger, because I think Councilmember Bonin is thinking of much bigger projects, done in ways that are elegant. I've seen these in, like, Hamburg, Germany, and that's a template that I look at. But I've seen it in Mexico City as well, and so we should look at that, site plan review modifications. I think micro-units are going to be part of this conversation, and part of this discussion, and so I'd like the CAO and the CLA to think about that, taking the model from the Greater Downtown Housing Incentive Ordinance, and look at how we do this throughout the city. Because as we move forward, that's going to have to be something that we look at. Not one size fits all, I think, in this model. And so we have to think about the diversity in terms of how we house people. Cost is going to be a factor, the environment's going to be a factor. We have to, you know, look at those again, in terms of shared vehicles, and how we, what our regs are in terms of development. And then, of course, we have this question of city-owned land, and we have to go beyond that. Given the growing diversity of our staff, or of our council, we should look at city-owned land, state-owned land, county-owned land, help me here, Mr. O'Farrell, some districts' own land, a whole range, so that we can begin to find the properties in our city that would be usable and available for us for the development of these projects. So it's a very exciting initiative. I think we need to really flesh it out, and we need to think that today's a new day. Hopefully, I don't know what it's going to look like. Maybe Mr. De Leon can tell us what the Senate will look like when we get back. But we're going to need Washington to step up and do its job. We're going to have to have the resources coming from Washington. Our country has been hurting. We're chosen a new direction, and we need to think about that. But in doing so, we need to have these initiatives ready so that we can move forward in terms of addressing the concerns of all the residents of the people of Los Angeles. So I speak in favor of this initiative. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. Sidio. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. Sidio. Thank you, Mr. Bonin, for introducing this very important new tool, or really, it elevates a bit of a collection of amalgamation of various ways that we have in the past and are currently funding either permanent supportive housing or affordable housing outside of the measure HHH arena at times. What this does, though, it's really wonderful, because you're elevating this as yet another essential tool in the whole spectrum of ways forward on handling and addressing directly what you very aptly described as conveyed as just this overwhelming need that I would argue is the number-one concern pre-COVID, during COVID, and post-COVID, this humanitarian crises that we all face. It is a way to formalize this as an approach to add officially to, like I said, the full menu of options that we have on getting people housed more quickly. And this option also can include purchasing buildings that are existing where there's rent control and long-term residence. Collectively, we have railed against tenants in common, which does just the opposite, and that is a big gigantic loophole in the state law that allows rent-stabilized buildings to be purchased by LLCs, what is the term, LLCs, and legally allows LLCs to evict long-term rent-controlled tenants, and then transform it into individually and collectively-owned condominiums, which is a real scourge on the city, and has resulted in homelessness and widespread displacement in the city of L.A. And so we need all the tools we can get, and we need to elevate this as a conversation for keeping people who are at risk, at the most vulnerable, of becoming displaced, and then, you know, putting it to the hopper on funding. And lastly, I'll say this, Mr. Bonin, and that is, collectively, colleagues, we have been working on making sure that the considerable resources that we have been fighting for, for years and years, we'll continue fighting for, in terms of resources to address homelessness and build more covenant and affordable housing in a way where we can put those incoming resources now and into the future to much better use, so that a funding stream can go toward social housing. And so really, this is a welcome ingredient to that conversation where we can expeditiously, expediently, and very, very, in a fiduciary, responsible way, make sure that every penny for affordable and supportive housing goes to where it's needed the most. And we need places for people to sleep warm and safe indoors. And that remains to be my number-one focus, and it's going to take the entire spectrum of options, temporary, semi-permanent, and, most importantly, permanent. So people have a home in which to live indefinitely. And so I wholeheartedly support this, and I look forward to helping elevate this as one of the options moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Bonin, for putting this motion forward, having the ability to speak on it. You know, housing instability, housing ability has no borders. Something I elevated a discussion as president of the National League of Cities in this country, but we ought to look at models around the world, models that work. But I do agree with Mr. Sidio that we do have models that work in the city of Los Angeles. So I want to warn this body and the city family, the whole notion of paralysis by analysis as it relates to housing. We know, I'm proud to report the largest number of public housing units in the city of Los Angeles, the turnaround that we've seen in Jordan Downs, with the placement, what we've, the housing development in Wilmington area, and also want to point out the Normont Terrace Project, now called Harbor Village, where it is a mixed-income community surrounded by amenities and jobs and public transportation, yet another model to follow. So I would also encourage, as we move forward, in looking at working with our federal partners in HUD, hoping we do see a change in the HUD administration that will deliver more vouchers, and Section 8 vouchers, rather, for our city and cities across the country, that we look at pathway towards homeownership as well. We look at models that do work, and moving forward, appreciate this motion, and again, just warn ourselves that, as it relates to housing, we need to lead with urgency. Thank you.
Mr. Sidio?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I just want to add to this conversation. Mr. O'Farrell and both Mr. Buscaino were noting that we have to, for whatever our vision, our vision has to be built on our reality and our current circumstances. That's the foundation, the platform for which we have to build. And so, and particularly, Mr. Buscaino, with, as he said, the largest amount of what the old model was of public housing, but then we're building on that, and we're making those changes. We look to emulate that in my district as well. But I want to note also that one of the things, and you've heard me say this both publicly and privately, lament that I was raising before the pandemic with the state government and their extensive resources that they had before the pandemic, is we have to keep in mind that there was a history matters, that there was a CRA, that there were, and there exist, thousands of units that were under covenants, and those covenants will be running out in the next five years. And that will put 10,000 units in jeopardy. And so we have to look at, and I know Mr. O'Farrell knows this, we have to keep people in the homes that they have now. And so that this concept of social housing should include addressing the concerns about the expiring covenants. We need to think about that. I know my office, we've been working on one of the rare projects of eminent domain in the city and in this state and nation, for it seems like two, maybe three years now. So it's not something that happens overnight. And we need to look at that process, and to see are there ways in which we can make that process work better, both for tenants and for the building owners. So again, I just want to add that to the list of the report back from the CAO and the CLA. I know that there are other specific report backs, but all these things work together. I just want to add that, because I don't want us to go off and think that we're building a lot of new housing, that the problem solved, and then, you know, on the back end, there's another 10,000 people who get pushed out of their dwellings. So thank you, Madam President, for that opportunity.
Mr. De Leon?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to associate my comments also to all those individuals who just spoke. Thank you, Councilmember Mike Bonin, for introducing something that's innovative. I think all ideas, all concepts, as innovative as they maybe have to be on the table, whether we build, whether we purchase, whether we use this new concept of social housing that may be very popular and successful in other parts of the world, we're not too big to borrow from other regions, from other states, from other nations, which is really critical. You know, and I want to give credit where credit is due, you know, with Councilmember Bob Bloomingfield. We were having a conversation just recently. I know that when he was chair of the Budget Committee up in the Assembly, you know, then-Assembly Member Bob Bloomingfield, obviously, through litigation, was a stalwart for CRA, and knew the value of CRA for our local governments, not just in Los Angeles, but throughout the state of California. But I just want to say one thing in particular relating to the Councilmember from CD1, Gil Sidio, which is the clock is ticking, and there is a tsunami on the near horizon, which is January 31st, 2020, when it is estimated that we may have, at minimum, a few hundred thousand individuals, working-class families, who will be evicted from their apartments. That's not including those whose covenants are going to retire sometime soon, and it goes from a subsidized rate, or I should say, a rent-control rate, to a market rate. We're not even talking about those individuals. We're talking about individuals who have fallen victim to the shelter-in-place edict and have been prohibited from earning a living, and therefore paying their rent. Remember, as, as I had mentioned sometime last week, these individuals, Angelinos, are going to be expected unless there is a deal that we've made by then, unless there's going to be a subsidy on behalf of the city and county and state of Los Angeles, because a new federal administration is not going to be able to react as quickly to the imminent expiration of the moratorium come January 31st. So it is real that we could possibly have hundreds of thousands of individuals who will be homeless come January 31st, when that moratorium expires. And that's why I commend all of my colleagues and their comments. I associate myself with their comments and to Mike Bonin for, for bringing any idea up that's on the table that we have to explore with a sense of urgency to make sure we can keep as many Angelinos as housed as possible. And obviously, to deal with the unhoused community that we currently have today. So thank you very much, Madam President, for the opportunity to share a few words.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. There are no other, no other members on the queue. Madam Clerks, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on item 15.
Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
De Leon?
Aye.
Harastasen absent, Corretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Yes.
Weston absent?
Thirteen ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. What's before us now? We're going to move on to, um...
Madam President, there are four verbal motions.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and start with the first one?
First one is a commendatory resolution introduced by Councilmember Sadio congratulating William Imperial on his 18 years of service to the city of Los Angeles and to extend best wishes for many years of good health and a long and happy retirement. Is there a second to this resolution?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfeld, next?
Next is another commendatory resolution introduced by Councilmember Sadio congratulating Ralph Avila on his 33 years of service to the city of Los Angeles and to extend best wishes for many years of good health and a long and happy retirement. Is there a second to this resolution?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell. Next?
The next verbal motion has been introduced by Councilmember Sadio. This is to be referred to the Health, Education, Neighborhood, Parks and River Committee. And this instructs the CAO to identify funding to invest in modernizing the athletic field at Lincoln High School. And a seconder?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, next?
Thank you. The next is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sadio to be referred to the Transportation Committee. And this prohibits parking of oversized vehicles in CD1 on certain streets that have been detailed in the motion. And a seconder?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Price?
Thank you. Madam, oh, that completes all the motions. The clerk has to read.
All right, thank you, Members. Any verbal motions, Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I have three. To begin with, the commendatory resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that by adoption of this resolution, that the city of Los Angeles, the city council and the city attorney hereby commends and congratulates Assistant City Attorney Deborah Gonzalez for her exemplary service to the city of Los Angeles and extends her best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell, next?
One second. And the motion is, I therefore move that the city, I'm sorry, that the chief legislative analyst be directed to report to council with the steps necessary to create a new citywide assessment district to generate funds for youth infrastructure and facility maintenance modeled after Proposition K program to begin prior to Prop K's expiration date in order to prevent a lapse in program funding.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfeld. Next, Ms. Rodriguez?
Okay, and lastly, I therefore move that the council instruct the city administrative officer with the assistance of the CLA to work with all departments that have received coronavirus relief funds to report to council in seven days with a summary of each department's CRF allocation, including programs implemented and associated costs, contracts executed, including scope of work, costs and contractors, current expenditures and projected year-end expenditures. And further move that the council instruct the CAO with the assistance of the CLA to report to council in seven days on the total amount of unallocated and estimated unexpended relief funds and provide recommendations on utilizing the remaining funds to be distributed equitably among economically challenged communities and prioritize funding for small business and family source center services.
Second.
Second by Mr. Krikorian. Any others, Ms. Rodriguez?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have three. My first one is, again, our San Pedro Outdoor Dining Pilot Program. I, I mean, call me, I'll take you to lunch. You guys got to take a look at these dining platforms in downtown San Pedro on me. So I therefore move that the city administrative officer with the assistance of the Bureau of Engineering, Department of Transportation and any other departments as needed, be directed to report with recommendations on a streamlined, permanent outdoor dining policy with the ability to establish a zone in which multiple restaurants can opt in under one application slash permit, the creation of a guideline document and ministerial approval process for outdoor dining platforms using the San Pedro Outdoor Dining Pilot Program as a guiding model.
Second.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell. Next, Mr. Buscaino?
Yes, this one is on the Granada Theater in Wilmington. I move that the matter of initiating consideration of a Granada Theater located at 632 North Avalon Boulevard in Wilmington as a city historic cultural monument, as reported under Council File Number 14-1487, which expired per Council Policy CF 05-0553, be reactivated and that the matter be restored to its most recent legislative status as of the date of the file's expiration.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Second by Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you so much. And lastly, this is a reward motion for the unsolved murder of Joshua Johnson. Move that the city clerk be directed to cause notices and/or advertisements to be duly published according to the requirements of Division 19, Chapter 12, Article 1 of the L.A. Admin Code and to thereby cause the offer of reward to be effective.
Is there a second?
$50,000 reward.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I have a motion to be seconded by Councilmember Blumenfeld and which I would like to move forward as a Rule 16. I move that the council action of May 27th, 2020, instructing the Planning Department with the assistance of the city attorney to prepare and present an emergency ordinance to eliminate financial and regulatory burdens on small businesses affected by the COVID-19 Emergency Declaration. Council File Number 20-0380-S1 be amended to include language in the requested ordinance to temporarily authorize the Planning Department to approve the placement of onsite signage within the Ventura-Coanga Boulevard corridor specific plan and the Westwood Village specific plan during the COVID-19 pandemic crisis via administrative clearance.
Mr. Blumenfeld, can I get a confirmation? You're second on this motion?
Yes, seconding confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Any others?
Yes, the next one I'd like to introduce co-presenting with Councilmember Sadio. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Los Angeles City Council that on October 24th, 2020, it be recognized as Acupuncture Traditional Medicine Day and that the California Acupuncture Traditional Medicine Association be applauded for their ongoing work and leadership to create a strong, united profession dedicated towards health and wellness for all.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Second by Mr. Sadio. Any others, Mr. Corretts?
I, I think we have a, a miss here because Mr. Sadio is already co-presenting, so we need an additional...
I'm happy to second that for you.
Thank you. That's perfect. And lastly, therefore be it resolved, and this will be seconded by Mr. Buscaino, now therefore be it resolved with the concurrence of the mayor, that by the adoption of this resolution, the city of Los Angeles hereby includes in its 2021-2022 federal legislative program, support for any legislation that defines domestic terrorism as a federal crime accompanied by appropriate penalties and sentences and seek to sponsor such legislation as well.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll confirm that second. Thank you.
Mr. Buscaino is confirming a second on that motion. Any others, Mr. Corretts?
I don't know, that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other members, Madam Clerk, what's next?
Motion, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posting and referred, Members, are there any announcements? Any adjourned motions? Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to adjourn today in memory of Sarah Hayes. Sarah was taken from us a few weeks ago, much too soon by a stroke at the age of 66. She was a longtime resident of the Rancho Park Chevyat Hills neighborhood, often put herself out there for measures that she believed were good for her neighborhood and for our city. She always acted in a diplomatic but persistent way. She would argue well thought out points, but was willing to listen to and consider other points of view and always worked towards her goals for the community with utmost respect for others. Sarah believes in building a light rail line along the abandoned railroad right-of-way through the neighborhood. This was at a time when many community leaders in the area were opposed to the idea. And she not only joined an advocacy group, Friends for Expo, but worked very actively with her neighbor, Karen Leonard, and others over many years to show and build support from the community for what eventually became the Expo Light Rail Line from downtown to Santa Monica. Once the Expo line was approved, Sarah was among the community members who actively worked to make sure that the project included native plant landscaping and portions of the metro right-of-way adjacent to the line and also advocated for what she thought would be the best pedestrian and bicycle connections to the neighborhood stations. She was able to see also the completion of the Westwood Greenway Proposition O project surrounding the Expo Westwood Station, which I'm glad to say started flowing in the final week, just in time for her to see it in full operation. Sarah worked closely with my office and a steering committee who worked over many years to help make this project happen. She was among the most determined and driven community leaders, and we very much appreciated her leadership and tireless efforts. Sarah was a consummate environmentalist and drove an electric car before most others had even given it a thought. She had a magnificent native garden that served as a model for thousands of others as a reliable stop on the annual Theodore Payne Foundation Tour. In short, she lived the way she advocated for a cleaner and healthier planet. Sarah Hayes will be missed by many, but her legacy will long be remembered by my staff and I, by her family, friends, neighbors and by her community. May she rest in peace.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Sadio?
Madam Chair, thank you. I've had problems with this mouse this morning. I wanted to make an announcement and I didn't want to cut off or interrupt Mr. Corretts, as hard as I tried. On Saturday, this goes under announcements, I want to invite everyone, all of you, to join me for this incredible Seventh Annual Latin Jazz Music Festival. It's the seventh year. We didn't want to break tradition. You're all invited to a viewing party with me. Those who can't make it can see it on Channel 35 from 5 to 7. Those who are driving can listen to it on KPFK. And those who want to dial in on the internet can go to gilssadio.com. It's going to be a great two hours of entertainment. We're going to have Gilbert Castellanos, Straight Ahead Jazz with his Latin Jazz Music Ensemble. It's a great, he's a great, great performer from San Diego. He's going to be performing. And then we're going to have Mungarama, which is a homage to Mungo Santa Maria. You'll learn about the history of Latin jazz, where it began, where it's played, how it's played. It's going to be exciting. It's going to be two hours. Obviously, I would love for all of us to be together at the park in northeast Los Angeles, but we won't be able to do that this year, so we're going to do it responsibly, safely, but yet with the same excitement of the charanga with our Seventh Annual Latin Jazz Music Festival, 5 to 7, Saturday, KPFK, Channel 35, and of course, always at gilssadio.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other adjourned motions, Members? Okay, seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.